All right, first item we have is approval for your finish. Is there enough further questions?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, corrections? Is now the same motion to approve?
So.
Second thing. All favor?
Hi.
The both carry. Jay, far as?
So I did speak with John Ryan yesterday and we'll read out to iron start. And then we will have a very clear path going forward, but as of right now, I believe we will be going for a first shot meeting on June twenty third as of the end or Thursday, June twenty third, at seven p.m. I don't have an agenda until John Ryan's speed with the, um, I did receive the two thirty nine referral back from the county regarding Fulton Resorts as well as this new dish. I received today, so apologies, put that back to you today. And then the last item of correspondence is I would request that the planning board waive the referral requirements for abbreviated site plan review and some of the other referral requirements in light of as recent car accident. The building department is trying to proceed with town head, but there's a little bit of catching people up speaking, so the referrals might not quite be as go with that against.
Yeah, so in lieu of the referral, then the applicant will write the due and then get it to us.
Everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Right, conference chat, anyone have any issue with any of the applications tonight? Okay. Old business, uh, voting for public hearing, market party, planning, review.
We'll leave this one a little bit more open to the public in case anybody wants to take a look to it. I think the board should all have their own.
I don't know how you guys handle your public hearings, you guys open to it to the public upfront or?
No, you can make your presentation and go from there and we'll keep watching and we'll make comments anymore.
So I'd like to thank anybody in the public that came out tonight to hear about the Fulton Forest project. Rachel is the current owner of the property is looking to start a wine retail business there. The existing property had parking lots on both sides of the parking lot of the building. There was a gravel parking lot on the east side of the building and on the west side. What Rachel's looking to do is keep the east side parking lot as is for two parking spaces. On the west side of the building, she's looking to expand to have some additional parking over there for a total of nine parking spaces on the site. The extension of gravel parking lot is roughly eight hundred square feet in area. To compensate for some of that expansion gravel parking lot, we're adding some vegetated buffer just north of the parking lot. She also has planned to add a building sign and a pre standing sign out in front of the building much in the location where the existing signage was. For lighting at the facility, we're looking for have site lighting in the existing locations of the eaves of the building. That will shut out a half hour after the business closes, the pre standing sign will be lit from dusk to dawn along the county area line. Other than that, traffic patterns are generally saying the same. We are looking at shrinking the entrance on the east parking lot. The entrance will be bumped to twenty foot in width. This is being done for two reasons, one, and the newly installed septic system was installed just to the area west of the entrance, proposed entrance. And two, the kind of channelized traffic typically county lights it anytime you can channelize traffic and not leave a wide area for folks to to leave a facility. Much of the existing vegetation that surrounds the facility will change, will remain. Excuse me, there's fencing that's being proposed, the six foot high fence is being proposed along the western property line and a replacement of the two rail split rail fence along the northeastern property line. Grading and drainage is proposed to remain the same on site. Currently, there's no drainage structures or drainage treatment on the site with a minimal impacts and increase of of gravel area on the site. We don't trigger any state requirements for any type of stormwater management or anything like that. Rachel, was there anything you'd like to add to that for any public here?
At the moment now, I think you've covered everything. I assume you'll have some questions for me that you want me to touch on, but I think Ryan hit everything for the existing first proposed.
Right, everyone get a copy of the C A D memo? Any comments, questions on that or?
Rachel, the one we may want to touch on is just your, your intended hours of operation.
Oh, yes, of course, I have written on paper. I'll go through it. So my proposed hours of operation would be Mondays noon to seven, Tuesdays I would be closed. Wednesdays, or excuse me, twelve to seven on Monday. Wednesday is also twelve to seven, eleven to seven on Thursdays, eleven to seven on Fridays, eleven to seven on Saturdays and twelve to five on Sundays.
So in general, we're talking about lights off before eight o'clock.
Exactly.
On the it's really late, that's the thing, it's such a good idea.
My worry with parking in the front would be people would have to back us into the street where it's fifty five going into thirty five. So people are going at a pretty accelerated rate.
The the traffic pattern thing is is a little bit would be of the county's concern. Parallel parking alongside of a county right away would be something the county would have to like look back into about traffic. As Rachel pointed out, we are going from fifty five down to thirty in that area. And so having a place where the cars pull off for people to open doors and safely get off and not be in the line of traffic. While I understand we're trying to protect the buffer from a safety perspective, it's much safer to have people get off not directly adjacent to a road. So that would be my concern. Yeah, obviously, I got it, what was that, a half hour or something? So that's kind of my first thought on being able to park up front. I I think from a safety perspective, that's not something that county would allow.
And then stormwater protection with the wild construction is going on, is that adequate according to this?
Well, I think they were, they reported silk fence we put down along the edge of the screen.
I think the question is how is construction going to occur? And I totally agree with the memo, if we end up ripping this parking lot up because we find that there's not enough gravel left underneath, like it's been worn away for too long. Most certainly, we will provide silk fence, we can't have that unvegetated or unstabilized in accordance with the stormwater manual. If it remains the same, the the other option is that we provide gravel, just kind of stir that gravel up and in the same daily gravel back down. The New York City Stormwater Manual was defined stabilized as a gravel surface. And so at that point, you don't have to install silk fence. The only hesitancy installing silk fence in that area is I have to dig something up to install silk fence properly. And when I remove it, I'll leave a disturbed strip around the corner, being on that edge of that event. I'd love to not be able to do that, love to just be able to place the stone appropriately and then let it stay stabilized and grassed for a nice little time.
Very well.
Just that that last parking spot, and we talked about that before, nine feet, that annoying, because that last parking spot is really the one that's so close to the three month stream. And they they sort of mentioned that in here too.
From an operation standpoint, I think we talked about last time, if you had a potential for two employees at the facility, you know, you're down to, you're down to seven parking spots.
And one allocated.
And one's allocated for ADA, so you're down to like six spots. We're just worried about how that functions and not having the empty space. And if you go one step further, as far as pushing snow typically in the winter, we're going to lose a spot. And now you're down to, was it five at that point? So we we would, we would like to leave it, and that's why we added the the plantings and tried to do what we can do there.
I know before the previous, even she bought ground before that, and just opening the broad people pour in now there, they got jammed here.
Right.
Well, once upon a time, we got.
Oh, really? So there was the, yeah. Yeah. That's what the guest did.
Yes.
Yeah, the twenty four. Comment?
Any questions, I think we did not find some. And when that that. Yeah. Yep. And then. And those trees. Or grass.
Absolutely. I wanted to make it look lush back there, you know, and and it's the the setting also will yield to that because it's this quaint little cottage setting over creek in the back. So, yeah, I wanted to get this lush feel.
What I did just hand the board, what it's the downward lighting, I think previously we didn't have an idea of what the second app light would be. So just to kind of complete the site plan application and make sure you have that information as part of that application.
Any comments, questions? Anyone from the public, any comments, questions? I think you have a little bit of a comment.
Uh, no, I don't have that.
Any of them? Yeah. And? Anyone? So. Great. What's your question on that one, one, two, three, four, five? Right, you're involved.
Yeah. I do, I do, this would be fine. Absolutely.
Having the ability to move snow is really important here too. Um. But, yeah, I'm sorry, no. Very true.
That's really, we really need it.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess as long as they just put a lot of stuff there. Put more stuff, yeah. I mean, basically, we'll just plant it up so that it's, yeah, that it's.
When they are common.
Jump out again.
Couple of things that I noticed we wanted to ask of the board today. We are currently calling out for our our last consultation to four foot by four foot concrete pads at the back of the building. One was for an AC compressor for the for climate control of the building itself and the wine room. The other was a hundred and twenty gallon propane tank, previously pulled the old propane tank off. Actually during, yeah, last month meeting, we realized we're going to need propane for heat. And so we added a place for that there. Those, as as everyone may know right now, contractors are a little bit difficult to get a hold of to get absolutely equipment specs out of. Those pad sizes may change slightly, but we're talking, there was being four foot by four foot to four foot by five feet. So I don't know if the board wants me to change the language on that, so it's valid on the state plan application. But it it may change slightly when we get to actual equipment size. The other item that I think was left open with the board after the last month's meeting was in regards to the septic system. The board had expressed concerns about not having an approval letter for the septic system. Septic system was installed since the last meeting. The county has inspected, built inspected the septic system, but we're put in a position where we're stuck in an infinite loop. As part of the requirement for the septic system, because the lot is irregular, it requires a UV system be installed inside the building. The UV system is going to be inside the new maintenance equipment area. The maintenance equipment area can't be installed until we have a building permit. And so we're put in this like infinite loop where we can't get the letter from the county because we can't get a building permit. And we can't get a building permit because we can't get the letter from the county. So our request would be that we were issued a conditional approval where the applicant could not receive a certificate of occupancy until she provided the town with that letter. Given that the system's installed, it's been inspected. We hope that that is our workaround. Be open to give the board, had to think about that.
That's difficult, I'm rolling this stuff. Any others what is? Nice to meet you, Paul. Okay. Could I win a motion for sort of the public hearing?
Hello.
Second? All favor? Both carry. Motion for a, make that. Motion made second. Any favor? Both carry.
Please. Um, okay. To approve a conditional approval based on a final septic approval.
Correct.
And then with regard to the landscaping and vegetation, do you want any conditions on that regarding refunding if, um, if things die?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a given.
Things die once you have a move in.
So. Everyone to do that, this will be based on the subject and the. Motion?
Motion.
Special? All favor? Both carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, most of this is okay. Any others? Anything on the?
I I guess not on. What he he has anyone on that line? Um, we did receive a letter.
Yeah. Right. Yes.
Yeah.
I think we moved it. We got. We were just waiting for them to give the word.
Yeah.
Yeah, both. All right, but before the agreement, I'll say most acceptable letter from Kopek and who will be? In the size of that. Yeah. Motion, both, sorry. All favor? Both carry. All right, Jerry, we're done. We've now learned. Very, very likely. Can you put it online?
Yes.
Right on, Michael?
Hi, are are you, are you looking at the learner McNally application?
Yes, you are.
Hi, I'm I'm Brad Horn, this is my partner Maria Berman. We are here to seek approval for the site plan for abbreviated site plan review for the learner McNally property. I, I, we've been here before, so I think you're somewhat familiar with the project. And we've done our best to answer some of the questions that you were asking from the last meeting. And we'd certainly love to answer any questions you may have about the current drawings.
Okay, I, I think, um, you're feeling quite of the comments.
Yeah. All star. Firstly, I checked your area disturbance and there's a big discrepancy between my numbers and your numbers. Specifically in the leach field area, I used the hatched area. You say it's ten thousand four ten, I come up with fifteen thousand six point five. So this is basically two hundred by eighty five, and then I took out the triangle that overlaps with the house. And the little area between the garage and the house is going to get disturbed, you build a gap there. So when you add all those numbers together, that puts you over the one acre. So in my opinion, you need a slip. And this was not the septic area that we showed on the last time, so obviously that's a reason, but I don't know. Who calculated your numbers, but?
Well, we're, we're using, we're using AutoCAD and doing a trace of all of our area of disturbance and all of the geometry. And we've done it, we've run over it several times to confirm the number that we got here and that we're showing. You know, we're, we're certainly happy to 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 run it again, but we're, you know, we're, we made every effort to be as accurate as possible using the software to calculate that number.
Like the man can, the total plan and multiplication and it puts you over the one acre, so. You can get backwards on it, but that will put you into a slip situation. So that's, that's my first concern. The letter from Mr. DeRusio refers to a system layout as shown, is this what was going to?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The letter from Mr. DeRusio refers to a system layout shown attached. I don't know what he's referring to shown attached. Is there another drawing that was submitted to him? Is there an engineered drawing that was submitted to him?
No, he's referring to this drawing that I I sent this drawing to him.
Okay. Wasn't clear anymore. So there's no engineer, no, I think their position right now that can totally have approval, they don't want to spend money to engineer a design.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, so it, so we've had extensive conversations with Mike DeRusio about this process. And judging based on what Mike has seen on the property and in our discussions together with the excavator, the excavation company and who's going to be doing the septic install. Mike felt confident that with his specifications, which are reflected here in the drawing, that we can achieve a system that would be, would be satisfactory and that he would approve. So he didn't feel that we needed to retain an outside engineer for this because it's a fairly straightforward system.
Okay. That, um, he's, he's he's wanting to. Also, I think you need another silk fence at the bottom of the septic system. I don't think the silk fence went on the other side of the driveway is going to be effective. So I think you need to show another silk fence encompassing the septic area.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Yes, that's still kind of detail.
I'm sorry?
There should be a silk fence detail, what is the contractor to install?
Okay.
And there's a typical detail with A bales or with fencing, you know. The period with. Then, um, the area disturbance backs into what grading you're going to do on site. And the site is not flat in any way, shape or form. You have, you know, contour going through the center of the house, for instance, which is the five sixty. So, you know, both sides of it, there's a slope. So, but your elevation, your, your aesthetic elevation is showing basically a flat site, so really need some grading information because if you're cutting and filling, that could affect your, your area disturbance and it's, it's not what's wrong. I mean, you're showing just existing contours, but you're filling elevations that are flat. So, I mean, there's got to be some connection between what the contractor is supposed to do with the dirt that he's going to move around and what the pictures show.
Um, I do want to actually say hi. If you look at the elevations, they do actually show the contours as they are. The contour lines, there is definitely a slope there. However, when you look at it over the scale of the house, the slope is only about a thirty to thirty six inch change across the short side of the house. So I do want to point out that the slope is conveyed in the drawings. There is a leveled area shown, but there is slope reflected, especially if you look at page L one oh one. So I think it's deceptive when you look over an entire lot, which is what we're seeing here in terms of the site plan on L one hundred, where you see all the slopes. But obviously, as we know, when you zoom in, it's quite a bit, you know, it it it's significantly less than you would see over the whole thing.
And but contours, it's not true for contours, there's a slope across the side of this house, it's not shown. Sorry. Disagree, but it's not, it's not anyway indicated. I mean, there's ten feet from the rear of the corner to the center of the house. I mean, there's, there's, there's grading that's going to go on here that's not at all indicated, so you really need a grade on it.
Those are my. I don't know, I don't know. Any other question?
No, I don't.
My, I, I do agree with Joe, if you look at your full area disturbance. Because based on those contours, I think it's going to be a little more than what you anticipate anything, and then Joe's going to come out with excess of one acre. And we did have a great.
Understood.
Okay.
Thanks.
You know, and I I expect to see signed seal drawings from somebody because these drawings are architect, there's no name, address or license number. So your submission to us should be signed, sealed, set for document.
Understood.
Okay. Good.
Great, thank you to the board.
Would see the CAD files help you in terms of the disturbed area, would that be better? Between his numbers and using the scale and the measures, it's clearly over. It can't follow it. Yeah, you can put a window around the disturbed area and measure it if I'm backed up on the screen.
We'll continue this until next month.
Yep, okay, I'll see you, I'll see you all next month, thanks.
When you get more usage, I would be worried that side. Yeah, look at the elevation shown.
Okay. We have, we have, you ready? On forward, if you recall, the financial layer come on. Where it may go sensefully, you know, 200 feet away. So Jeff Horowitz requested a waiver. So we have to have that from him. And we think we're, we're. I think we all agree with what Kate is. Yeah, we went right away there.
Yeah, I didn't put that on the list to change.
That wasn't, that would be right. That was quite a lot of them. It's a lesser application we got.
Yeah, approved.
Oh, nobody ever adjusted because it's just.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
Like I said, the riding stable bond is like 200, it's 20,000, 2,000 feet from every property.
Makes no sense.
Save the land.
Yeah. If I can build a road, get out, take a long walk in the barn. Let me vote for first to grant the waiver. So I said back on the forward application. And then I'll, motion made, second. All favor, I propose, carry, and then motion. For each negative.
Motion. Second.
Okay. Okay. Motion made, second, all favor. Carry and motion. Motion made, second, all favor. Both carry. Okay.
Andy Paul, Mr. Chairman, many ways better, attorney from Kinderup. And I'm here with Loretta Park this night, and I believe she dropped off updated surveys for you. You have them? With the whole board. Do you have enough to go with that?
Yeah.
So this is an abbreviated site plan. If the folks that are putting a single family residence in agricultural zone, she's got 15 acres. There was some, there was a request to add some language from the surveyor about what amounts to an agricultural disclosure. You'll note just for, and I'm sure most of you remember this, there's order health approval for the proposed septic. There is a SWIP that was submitted by Pat Hendigas, who's an engineer at Kinderup. They're previously, this was looked at for Army Corps of Engineer and New York State Department, without a consequence. And the, we previously submitted an EAF as well. We have the letters to the. My understanding, you have the confirmation tool. From the Columbia County Board of Health.
There's one issue, an issue that I noticed. The ditch. It's rather ditch.
The riblet.
It's tree and and rogen.
I mean, tributary. Are you referring to what's called the, the riblet on the east side of the property?
Yeah.
What is the issue with respect to that?
Well, it's not, it's not a ditch. It's, it's a protective stream. The setback is 108.
And we're 100 and more than 100, I think.
Measure 175.
It's over 175. Yeah. So that means it's over 150.
No, there's a stormwater management laying there. This number has it. It was submitted by John Paxton.
The existing stone drive, does that exist into somebody just put it in or did it been there right walk? So different there.
Um, it was, it was put in, we hadn't realized we were supposed to have a permit for that.
Excuse me?
Well, I didn't realize I needed a permit for it and we had it put in so that we could bring our horses in.
Okay, so that really should be shown as new.
Well, I think, I don't know, what did he show it as?
Did you get one from the county for that?
Excuse me?
Did you get a permit for that?
No, I don't have a driveway. Because it's supposed to be a gravel road to get in and, you know, an in and out, and I hadn't realized.
Was there a driveway there?
No, it was very good. But the county came in and put a new covert pipe where the driveway was supposed to be before I did anything. They, the county came in and did that for me because old cover was not, so there was a place for the drive. It was.
There was an entry there.
Yeah, it was just, so they upgraded that pipe before I did anything.
I thought you told me there wasn't existing. It's like, there's an old way to get in. So if the question is, was the stone driveway part of the mathematical calculation of disturbance?
Yes.
I believe it was, and it's in the report.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Who has all this stuff for the total of this SWIP? I thought you had it. I thought that was it. I don't. You spent your whole life trying to blame somebody else.
Now that was, this was anything.
This is it? It's like a great.
This is a pretty significant report. And quite frankly, there was some debate about the amount of disturbance. So we just decided to do it and, you know. Yeah. Loretta, why don't you come up here? Because I'm sure it's. People in your neighborhood.
And if he puts a lot of blunders and stuff, it's not broken. I've never used and I can go to the US.
Nobody said.
Yes, those are not. Then they were created, they were when I bought the property. And, you know, we were aware that, you know, the neighbor has. Okay, you do not have, yeah, you have the old survey. This is, you know, I mean, you.
Up here. That's the word.
I think that's. All the surveys that the new, the latest survey that's up to date that I dropped the one, all have this. No, that's still an old one. Apparently not everybody has the new survey.
We were asked what to add.
To add. So having it this is the. They said it was not a major contributor to anything. It was considered third class or something. And then anytime I want to maintain it, just give them a call and you will refer them. They understand that it's, it's not so much for us, but for the form of here. Good into that. And then I do the forward thing.
I was thinking you have animals.
We have six horses.
I would make a suggestion that because of runoff issues with agricultural runoff, that you might want to consider some water here. Maybe like a twine fire tree, even to the minimal water. Because.
This is just a river stream.
But it still goes somewhere and it actually could affect the following. It's just going to a wetland and then.
Well, so here, and I'm not trying to be difficult. Memorial horses. First off, I don't believe it's regulated. That's number one. Number two, the Army Corps of Engineers, the State Department of Federal Constitution, both states, exactly what we're going now, risks is here. What we're doing is obviously we're staying away from this end of the property for the reasons that are very clear. But I don't want to see the red. The only back, a very limited operation to begin with. It's a limited operations, I have a deal. And the kind of, in my opinion, some arbitrary scheme is we think that because there's six horses, you would keep 20 times the vegetation. When a site has fine anywhere and being the regulatory folks that regulate the streams and wetlands, don't use one. I appreciate everything you said, even nitrogen and water. Exactly. How we're supposed to. It's nice to have a state. So we don't watch. I wanted, so Brett has been here four times.
She didn't have any.
This is, this is, you know, one. And this is. Agricultural community, which is part of this happening, is important, but we're working kind of backwards. Single family cows is the intruder in the agriculture area. We know, but they definitely meet sound. It's objectionable, running shit. What's across three, there's really nothing.
And which, I mean, it's just a consideration. I think I'm just putting it out there as consideration and certain that's something that's mandatory on agricultural setting, but residential settings are come what is currently that towards 150 foot water with a 25 foot vegetation. But that's not necessarily agricultural, which is. I totally understand that. And she, I have the statement here and use like rancher agricultural business of some sort.
You register as a farm. So I don't know what Loretta. I don't know how much that any type of vegetation stand would impact your cooperation.
Um, we actually, because of our own, you know, somewhere to issues, it's graded so that things can near it can drain not. So I mean, if you want, what do you want something actually planted around it?
I think what they want you to do is keep the horses away from it and make sure there's vegetation that grows between the edge of the fence and that riblet and make sure that there's something of a filter that keeps whatever the runoff is from getting to the riblet, which possibly could go across the street.
Yeah, I mean, what, do you have a noise storage area? What do you have?
Uh, right, yeah, we could set up our compost and. In the house. We have organic, well, organic, new, I actually buy it to different landscapers and small farms and use myself. So, I mean, you know.
May I make the following suggestion? Why don't we just agree that we'll do like 10 or 15 or 20 feet that keep the fence away from that riblet? Regardless of its classification, regardless of anything else, and just make sure that she just allows vegetation. You okay with that?
I mean, we were planning to possibly connect the pastures there, but yeah.
We got a bunch of pages in there.
Yeah. Of course, the horses are not, the pastures are not anything. If anything, it was going to be just a way to walk around to others. We were never going to develop right up.
Of course, we'll get hurt.
Come on, yeah.
No. It's not even you said. So essentially, if you were to draw a parallel line. So let's agree on the, the.
Okay, there's one thing. One of our members who is not able to do this evening pointed out that there's a kettle shrub pool on the national wetland inventory. And that requires the on the plan that that needs to be shown.
There's a, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
What do you call it?
It's a kettle shrub pool. I have never heard of that.
And we've had.
And I've done the, I did the EAF and nothing came up on there. Is that Cat Widow?
I think that's. And that's why you had. We already did that. So we get back to that setback area.
Yeah, we do, if we do a fence, 25 feet, but it's in between.
Is that too much? Do you want to?
I'm already saying the two acres on the other side of it.
He's up here. I don't, I believe she wanted to comply. Well, the, the, this, this is the 150 feet. It's like 200 feet plus.
Oh, from here?
Yeah. So, and this data doesn't find, because it's agricultural activity. So 25 feet along here and it picks up some base. Jerry, you coming?
My only concern with this is not an exified stream. I understand it for agriculture, but all the farms around it plowed right up to. All the way, every year, and on the other side.
And they drive through it.
And drive through it, lime it, fertilize it.
Yeah, you're worried about nitrogen, the farm that fertilized.
All that water is coming down from doing it on to that. All that water is coming down from Dunning Farm to that and there's.
Essentially, you're asking. I mean, the key is, the key is that.
All of that stormwater runoff is coming from Dunning Farm above me with all of their stuff and there's no vegetation to go into it.
What, what do we?
I could say. This is, they're going to pencil one years. I think it's part of pencil on this.
It's only heavy rain or spring. Because you gotta lose that. There's that in the paper said. Very, but we live with that.
Yes.
You go with ten.
So number one, two, one, ten, ten feet away.
Here's, here's what we get to the pitch. You're not going to pasture within ten feet of that river.
There's never going to be pasture within ten feet of. Uh like I said, last we planned on having a little game.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll take every time. Oh, no, we don't. I had another question. Let's watch in the comments. The driveway needs to be shown.
Yeah.
This should really be shown and drive.
Yeah, we can. We can be a conditional, you know, if you can. Read through the map.
Tell you what I'll do. I'll change the map, take out existing, put new driveway, twelve foot, not be wider. How wide is that?
It'd be twelve.
Twelve.
I think it's.
Of course, that'd be.
You got five.
And they show the vegetated area.
And we'll show the ten foot vegetated, but how's that? With those conditions, we'll make the new map and we'll be happy.
Yeah, go quick, bro.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. If that's the case, I'll. And send a motion for a. Check to action. One minute second. All fair, I vote. Terry, uh conditional approval based on relocating or showing new driveway and showing the vegetable. Most remain second, all fair, I vote.
Thanks, folks. She'll have those pages made by the surveyor. She dropped off you. And then how do you work that? The charity signs, whatever.
Okay.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
It's ice cream time.
Yes, hello.
Right.
Uh, we're just here for the renewal of our um short-term rental permit. Um, we haven't had any issues in the past year. And nothing with our buildings changed, so.
I'm not aware of any issues that unfortunately.
There's.
Hasn't been.
There's no issues. I live two hundred feet.
Okay.
All right, well. Uh I think we're short for one twenty two.
Yeah.
Right. Um but there are issues. Uh most to, to, to renew. It was about a one-year renewal or a two-year?
Would have to one year.
One year.
That's a bit of a long. All right, most remain second. All fair, I vote. Terrence. Okay.
Thank you.
Gardella, area various approval from the VBA.
Give time here, I can show you the map. It's an existing structure currently forty-four feet away from the road. And he wants to add an addition here, keeping that setback. So he essentially needs a six-foot variance.
This was one of the homes on the Lampin property that we just recently. You know, subdivided. They just they hold right on the corner. So.
So he adding to that.
Going across from the main farm. Yes, yes. Right, so at this point, I mean, he's not further approaching. Um wasn't there something? There was a guarantee that he don't go without the building, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's one land. There's a lot of issues, so he's before the VBA um and they're just looking to us for, you know, whether we object or not.
What's the approach in second here?
Yeah. Even closer to.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. It's a focus. Wait till they do that. Right? So I agree on. Okay. Yeah, I think. Anyone have any problem with that? I mean, our, our response to the VBA is that we don't have any objectives to them granting variance. Someone should agree to that. Okay. All right, Jay. It's over that. Well, Ren is dead, though.
David. Hi. Uh.
You do the short drive.
Short drive. What would you like to hear from me first? We said what pretty much what we were asking in our letter.
No, they sent a letter to us.
Yeah, it's in a letter.
Yeah.
Um and the condition of approval was an absolute statement. Thou shalt, I, I'm adding thou. But thou shalt not cut any trees between. Uh Mar- April first and, and October, November first, October thirty first. And uh we just wanted to understand what the basis of that absolute wording is. And why it needs to be stricter than what is permitted by state and federal laws. And then we're not, we want to comply with protection of northern law need that, so we're not trying to get out of that. We would just like to have uh suggest that perhaps wording uh that. Says, causes to follow state and federal laws and guidance. And would give us a little more leeway to be able to uh. Uh do some work on.
Yeah, I think the, the resolution pretty much states that you can't cut trees between that period, not period.
Good. Period under report and doesn't even tell us, you know, if we hire, doesn't even give us a provision to hire a.
Yeah, and I think maybe that's something we might want to consider is amending the, the approval. Uh whereby they can hire a professional consultant to make an recommendation for what can and cannot come down. You know, and that way it's not just denying every, every possible tree because I understand that there's a lot of things that could come down.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have trees that are less than three inches in diameter. We have smooth trees that have no structure for bats.
Would, would you be, uh, would you be able to do that, to hire an arborist or someone that, you know, just make a recommendation on what you're looking to do?
Oh, yes, certainly. Certainly. I mean, I, I'm a. Have a thirty-year career as an environmental scientist and supervised bat biologists and I have that just many times in my career.
Yeah.
So.
Well. I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah, if there's nothing in the tree, then you could be able to bite down.
Yeah, exactly. They, they may well, but as long as, I, I think we need to amend it because right now he just can't touch anything.
That's right.
That's unfortunate. You should have the ability to take down, you know, anything that's not totally affecting. The bat or whatever condition makes it.
We're even determined what even determine if bats are, any bats are present.
I, well, I think that's where our, our final resolution conflicts with what the DBC and, you know, um. All the other regulations stated. So I think, you know, we need to somehow just reword that uh in such a way that uh is all be conformed with the, the state regulations. Um and in the event that there's a question, he can, he can have the right finger, have them to me and hire. An arborist or something to make a regulation. I think, I do think we need to move now.
Yeah, but because the state obviously, the state provides a process.
It makes sense.
For surveying and so on. That's what my suggested wording had been to.
Yeah.
I, I, I have some kind of sug- some suggestive wording at the end. Now the letter.
All right, if the board is agreeing with that, I, I recommend that Jay work on my language on that. As a um resolution, we can approve that, Steve.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry. Hi.
Yes, hi.
I do understand modifying the existing condition. The problem is the town's enforcement capacity right now is non-existent.
Yeah, but I can't, right, I can't worry about that right now. I got, I got a look, I, I got a look at the future. Right now is a temporary situation.
Oh, I heard accident and it didn't know.
So, so the board's agreeing with that? Um. Well, is the question about building a lot or just? No, no, the question is, his ability to take trees down, you know, um.
And this time. Yeah, I, I, I did an inventory of the trees that we need to come down to. Uh, we need to make some improvements on our driveway. Uh, there are like fifteen trees and then half of them are under, under six inches. We're talking about. A, a number of them that are just two inches. We're talking about another fifteen trees uh to be able to complete our septic system. So I mean, altogether on a five-acre lot. We're talking about thirty uh trees. The maximum DBH, the largest tree is twelve inches. Uh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the whole trip, my tree inventory. And uh, you know, forty percent of them are six inches or less in diameter. So, you know, it's in that neighborhood of thirty trees right now. And a five-acre lot that has hundreds, hundreds. Yeah, yeah, they're smaller trees.
So the proposed language be the applicant shell fly any trees for removal prior, you know, between the period of March and November. And if. Bill was. So it's free use under my authorized by the CAC or a botting or.
Yeah, in other words, as long as any one of the agencies say yes to it. I, I think. No matter.
And then what documentation would, uh, would we need to uh present to the town?
Well, I, I think, I, I think the first thing would be um that if you were ready to do some work, just pull DEC in. Let them look at it and let them sign off on it. And only, all we need at that point and all the building department need at that point is a letter from them. Saying that they have no problems with what you're looking to do.
Okay.
Uh, and I think to me, that's the simplest way of approaching is DEC is going to say to you, yeah, we're okay with this. They give you something that we can give the building department. Now it's something on file.
That sounds, I'm, I'm agreeable to that.
Well, good, but I know, I know one that ever just cuts firewood or cuts a tree, you know, trees. Yeah, they just, uh, they just cut it, right? Colleen, I mean, around here.
Yeah, but you know, actually we did, when we did the cover and I follow road, I like triggered one of these and we ended up trying to get over from the beast.
Right.
The town did.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think we do, we need, but it's like. That's the perfect answer, D.C. And I'm saying, and why do you have to have to spend all these? That won't happen. You know, the D.C.'s going to try and do it for nothing. And if you can't, then you have to. So you would have to come in here with that letter, do a bid for it. No, we don't need a permit. We're just saying that, you know, these are the trees that they got, D.C. signed off on it and as long as they, then they can, you know, deal with it. I mean, we're not the enforcing agency. Or we're going to try and give somebody some latitude and, and make it easier on ahead as well. And I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, and, and, and as I say, we want to comply with the ECU rules. I'm absolutely no problem with that. And, you know, want to cut down the minimum number of trees and we, we've held off on cutting trees. Because we didn't want to just cut trees everywhere and then cut, cut down trees. We want to save as many trees as we can on our property.
So why don't we do this? I, I, I entertain a motion um to amend. The um, the, the resolution on, on the tree cutting to coincide with the guidance of the D.C. And in the actions of D.C. presence, um a licensed arborist.
May I make a suggestion? Qualify that biologist.
Okay. So I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to make it easier. Um, but if we could do that, then we at least approve this tonight. And then. We've got a direction ahead and we'll be doing a resolution or, you know, filing a resolution next month, but at least we approve that going forward.
You know, maybe out there and.
Yeah. Yeah, you can. We know that. So that would be, that would be the two options then, okay? So the board, if they don't make, make a motion for that?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear everything coming, I have to say.
Oh, I just, I said, I like the fact that he gave you two options, either primarily going to the D.C. or going to a biologist.
Yeah.
So that if it means we don't get back to you because they're.
You have the facility to go out and get some of your food.
Okay.
And it doesn't affect like you have to come down.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, well, the tree cutting, I mean, I, I believe, I, I, I believe on, on the D.C. website. Uh, the tree cutting is uh called a voluntary measure. So I, the regulatory. I don't know, I, I was, I'm not a lawyer, so.
Sorry, we, we have a question. My girl, second. Second. By all fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Say anything else?
E.A.T. letter.
Yeah. We have now, we're like, yeah, we're not enough. Well, let's go. You know, we're all aware of an issue with, with the last one. Property. Um, and, you know, the women, they started clearing. But they don't usually adhere to anything at this time. The grading is kind of weird. They put barriers upon the driveway so no one can really get up there to see what's going on. They put barriers upon the driveway so no one can really get up there and see what's going on. We do have an issue obviously with that not available to go up there and quite frankly, we've never been able to, no reason to move fast. I was. Going to have Jay. Contact the last place. And tell him that we've got some concerns about the grading that's going on. And if we'd like access to the property. Now, at that point, whether we hire an engineer to look, then look at it and see if it conforms to plan. Or whatever, but we need to get access to that property without somebody having to walk from twenty two all the way to the top of the town.
Yeah, I don't know if we got to the top.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I agree, Joe, there's something, you know, fishing on all players. There, there's a reasonable block of the block.
Yeah, but my concern right now immediately is the banks are unprotected.
Yes, they are.
And, you know, June is the month of the plant. You don't plant in June. So I, well, it's.
Yeah, it's the week.
And, and, and there is erosion on the bank.
Right, you can see it. Now, I didn't go by there today, you know, the rain yesterday, but.
I've been watching it right then. It's just unfortunate. I don't know what our enforcement is. I, I made a good question for John Lyons that if this guy is not going to cooperate. As I had mentioned, a lot of hydro seeding and probably hydro seeding is the best scenario at this point of this, this time of the year to stabilize those banks. But they're pretty steep. And they're not rock, they're soil. And the driveway looks a lot skinnier if you're going to tend to set. I mean, there's life safety concerns, but there's also environmental concerns at this point that. But, you know.
Well, if you get a flood washers, you sleep them on, but it's scared them on the fast side. Yeah. Yes, I, I think what I do is have, have Jay reach out to the last one, tell him we need access to that site. Then you can make a determination if Ed can't get out there or, you know, someone else in his place. They, 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 they will be an engineer out there and. Someone is in charge of that project. Right, yeah, because it was a slipper wash. So, and, and that's, I don't know, I don't see a mailbox out there. Unless I missed it. You know? Yeah, so for the bottom line is. We need to. So we need to find out who's doing the work. Um, where's, where's the old swip paper work and so forth.
So. I did speak with Ed, he did go out there. I asked him about whether he checked his swip paperwork. He said no, he said he would go back out. And then I, I didn't hear from him on the project after that.
Well, I say, I don't, I don't foresee a mailbox out there for the swip paperwork.
And unless there's a trailer somewhere, this.
And the fact that those blocks are along the bottom of the driveway, you can't get there. Well, a lot of that D E C is show source down, unless somebody makes a call down there, it's still kind of.
So can I, can I also reach out to Pat?
Yes.
Who's the engineer that filed this with? And the building department in terms of who they contracted.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, the, the project probably should mention the contract.
Yeah.
Come back here. Uh, I know, I'm, I wear a hat of the C A C. And so I'd say one comment on behalf of the C A C. Uh, C A C, we did look at, uh, the meeting minutes when the blast project was approved. And I noted that there was a comment in the meeting minutes. Uh, where there's been a question from the planning board about hydro seeding and.
Yeah.
The engineer said, yes, they were considering. Yeah, so.
It may be a situation where we have to go in and do it in a building, put it on its actual, whereas. I don't see it getting resolved there. I'm a fluke.
But it's not that hard. I walked up there in about twenty inches of snow, straight up the side. Aaron and like a bunch of people from the C A C and the property next to it. I've walked that road. That is not hardly walk. It's not that hard to mark. Unless, you know.
Yeah, we should have to do that. Why would someone walk up the top there? There's good edge of access. I mean, that, no, that makes no sense.
I mean, that's, that's maybe inspection is probably going to give us feel.
Right.
I don't think there's any.
In the, in the long term.
It is, that's what, that's what I'm thinking of. I'm, I'm very, I'm very surprised by that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why you need to have them.
That's not something the owner does, so he can not keep himself out.
They put a cane across the walk, they don't do that.
Yeah, because it is strategically placed, because I stopped, I said, can I get around this?
So we need, we need for him to, first of all, have them move, we need him to ask some questions, we need Pat to ask some questions on it and then we'll be over with it.
He may have to throw the ball past court.
Yes, make it better. Oh, yeah, they're going to seat side off on it and he can prepare the swip, so. But he's not the one that lays it in force to go though. No. Yeah, well, and then we go from there. All right, so that's going to be the direction we're heading in. Do we, do we know how many of the S T R short term rentals we have actually played total on?
So. Every bit six.
There's six. We're just talking about that. It's not a commonplace.
Uh, special use permit from the planning boards. You have received a renewal and there's another application.
There's another. South of that, there's another project.
The one, the one where he goes closing off?
Yeah.
Yeah, we pulled that.
It went, yeah, what was it? What happened?
They had a, like, it was going on.
Yeah.
Got a view for us.
No, no.
Oh, why don't we, no, why was close? There's a huge excavation going on. I just don't remember.
No, I met him because Aaron and he. Yeah.
That was one who was concerned about the water coming off twenty two running across this property.
Yeah.
And.
I agree with that, but.
He's pretty far away from twenty two. Yeah.
But if that house, I've done it. He was very much, I liked him, he's on there, they don't.
Right, are they off? Oh, that's all we're pretty sure. Motion. Well, well, made second, all favor. Proposed. Carry it.